Welcome very much to the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. Our mayor, Mark Mitchell, is attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors, so I'll be taking his place tonight. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and invite everyone who's able and willing to stand and join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to call upon Councilmember Adams for a motion to approve the council meeting minutes.
Yes, I move to approve items 3A.
Second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So the vote is six to nothing with Mayor Mark Mitchell absent. Excellent. Now, call upon Councilmember Adams for a motion to accept board and commission meeting minutes.
I move to accept items 3B, 1 through 10.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So that passes with 6-0 and with Mayor Mark Mitchell absent. All right, now I'll move down to reports. So, I would like to call down to receive the proclamation Eric Anderson, Executive Director of MAG. Eric, we're so happy to be here today with Maricopa Association of Governments called MAG. You've really taken on the role of bringing a lot of attention to the devastating statistics around domestic violence. Your regional domestic violence council has done so much work in the area of getting municipalities to work as a region to better respond and address issues associated with this issue. Purple, your tie, thank you so much, is the official color for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So the city of Tempe has once again been able to light City Hall purple. We'll be doing that on Domestic Violence Day. So thank you Charles Pladeen and his team for that. And I'd like to now read the proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive problem that affects 1 in 4 women and 1 in 7 men in Arizona, and the trauma and suffering caused by domestic violence destroys families, threatens the safety of neighborhoods, and weakens the ability of communities to thrive. Whereas in Arizona, last year there were 87 domestic violence-related deaths due to domestic violence incidents. And whereas it's our responsibility as citizens and residents of this state to support one another in advocating for nonviolence and securing a future for our children and safe families. Whereas Maricopa County spends an estimated $18 to $26 million a year addressing domestic violence through the criminal justice system and making domestic violence one of the biggest challenges that needs a solution. Whereas since 1999, MAG has coordinated a regional response to domestic violence through the criminal justice system and with the development of the regional plan to end domestic violence. And whereas, the Observance of Domestic Violence Awareness Month will create awareness, educate and strengthen the message that we can substantially promote all of our state and our nation to join us in our campaign advocating nonviolence, make a solemn commitment to end the violence, promote peace, making our community a safer place to live. Whereas the city of Tempe will light City Hall purple in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month on October 1st, 2018. Now therefore, and standing in for Mark Mitchell, mayor of the city of Tempe, we do hereby declare October 2018 Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona. Thank you so much. Thank you. I also want to point out that Tempe is the first in the nation to have a domestic violence-associated commission, or family justice commission. We're also here today on behalf of the Little People of America Valley the Sun Chapter. A few months ago, Edward Leo Myers III had requested a proclamation for National Dwarfism Awareness Month. Edward was president of the chapter and a longtime resident of Tempe. Unfortunately, sadly, Edward has passed away due to pancreatic cancer, which my father-in-law suffered and died from. I know it's a devastating disease. Bob, we are so sorry for the loss of Edward. We're so happy we can honor him today with this proclamation. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the Little People of America, LPA, is a national nonprofit that supports and aids individuals and families with dwarfism and education, medical support, parenting and education, vocation. Whereas LPA has over 6,000 members across the U.S., 13 districts, 70 chapters. And whereas LPA welcomes all forms of dwarfisms and encourages an inclusive community supportive of all individuals and with dwarfism regardless of age, race, religion, and status. And LPA has also provided information and awareness on not only dwarfism but disability rights, medical issues, employment and education. And LPA has been a longtime organization who specializes in offering support and community outreach to other individuals in the dwarfism community. And whereas individuals with dwarfism are like any other contributing member of society and contribute to the wide culture and economy of Arizona and our city. And whereas individuals with dwarfism are always welcome in the city of Tempe. And whereas the city of Tempe stands committed to be an inclusive community welcoming all Tempe citizens of diverse traits and backgrounds. And whereas, October is National Dwarfism Awareness Month, and the city of Tempe would like to recognize the LPA adults and children who are making a difference every day in the Tempe community. Now therefore, on behalf of Mark Mitchell, the mayor of Tempe, we do hereby proclaim and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact and contributions of the Little People of America to our city as well as welcoming inclusive communities. We declare October 2018 as National Dwarfism Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona. The microphone's there.
Aye. Whatever you prefer.
Do you want to be able to record for the people at home to listen?
I wasn't planning to do this. I'm just standing in for my good friend Ed. But I do want to say something that affected me and how progressive the city of Tempe is. My wife and I happen to live in Chandler, and we have a group of 13 friends that we've had since 1995, and five of them are ASU professors. And so we spend most of our time in Tempe. And I've had three back surgeries. And I went down to visit a friend of mine at lunch in downtown Tempe, and I couldn't reach the parking meter, which is something that I've never really experienced. Well, a lot of times I don't use a parking meter, I park in a garage. And I jumped to the parking meter about five times till I finally fell. And somebody saw me and took my money, put it in the meter for me. And then I told my friends I couldn't join them for lunch. I always found an excuse. And somebody who lived in the city of Tempe said, "If you get a handicap card from your doctor, you don't have to pay for parking," which means you don't have to worry about the parking meter. And Tempe is one of the few cities in Arizona that's progressive enough to realize that. And I actually had a talk with the director at downtown Phoenix, and they do not recognize that. Just a little aside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I would like to welcome Debbie Nez Manuel, Community Service Volunteer for Morning Star Leaders. And perhaps everyone that's with you would be wonderful. We'd love to welcome you. We're happy here to have Debbie, who represents Morning Star Leaders. We at the city of Tempe are always supportive of inclusiveness, and we have a deep respect for cultural diversity and history, which is why we're supporting the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas Tempe values the main contributions made to our community through Indigenous Peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, and the arts, and the deep ancestral and cultural contributions that have substantially shaped the character of the city of Tempe. And whereas Tempe promotes equality for all Indigenous Peoples and honors our nation's Indigenous heritage, history, and contributions. And whereas Tempe strongly supports the proposition that Indigenous Peoples shall have an opportunity to celebrate the thriving culture and values of Indigenous Peoples of our region. And whereas Tempe appreciates the Indigenous community and the strong relationships we have with our neighbors and tribal communities. Now therefore, on behalf of Mark Mitchell, the mayor of Tempe, we do hereby proclaim October 8th, 2018 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Tempe, Arizona.
Good evening, everyone. Yahtzee, she is on the kitchen, she's not building, she's cheating, sit not genie, that's a cheat, come on, that's a molly, she is a fraud, there are you sit there, now she is a shas, she is a Royce Manuel.
Hi, Akmarat. My name is Royce Manuel. I'm from the Soror River, Pima, Maricopa, Indian community. And one of the reasons that we think this is really important because where we're at right now is where our land originated from, from here all the way into Mexico. So to recognize this day is really important to understand that the reason you guys are sitting in this here is because we were here. Okay? And we share that opportunity, continue to share the opportunity that we still exist together.
There are a number of activities that happen for Indigenous Peoples' Day. So if you look online on Facebook, you'll see Indigenous Peoples' Day or Arizona IPD. There's a lot of activities that you can go and learn more about tribes around Arizona. I think Royce and I agree wholeheartedly that there are over 576 tribes, federally recognized tribes exist. And we strongly believe that you can find one representative from each member of the tribe here in Legislative 26, which includes our Arizona State University and the neighboring community, city of Mesa. So we really believe that, and we're excited that we were able to work with the city of Tempe to get this proclamation presented. On behalf of our youth, we really like to model this information to them, to show them that these are the processes for building relationships. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to call to the stage Shelley Siler, David Lucas, John Huang, and David Fabiano, if you could come on up. So staff from Tempe Gilbert Mesa, the Maricopa County Department of Transportation, and the Arizona Department of Transportation were recently recognized by the National American Public Works Association for their collaboration in creating the East Valley Arterial Travel Time Map Project. The map allows the public to get real-time travel data from much of the East Valley on az511.gov, and they won the Technical Innovation Award. This federally funded project uses Bluetooth and Wi-Fi sensors around the East Valley to collect travel speed and time data to manage congestion along arterial roads. The project installed 130 Wi-Fi anonymous re-identification or ARID sensors inside traffic signal cabinets throughout Mesa, Tempe, Gilbert. 71 sensors were installed in Tempe. Is that the most of any city? I hope, yeah? Let's just say it is, providing complete coverage of the city's arterial network. Feeding this traffic information into the AZ511 website allows the public access to a color-coded map of real-time travel time and congestion data, which then permits drivers to identify alternative route choices to avoid congested areas. The deployment of these sensors at various intersections allows each city to monitor congestion on arterial roads. If the sensors reveal a change in travel time, whether from a possible incident or a change in travel demand, corrective measures can be taken by agency staff to reduce congestion and modify signal timing. So I'd like to present the award. And I want to say my husband was editor of the Transportation Town Hall a number of years ago, and I asked him what was the most exciting thing that's going to come out of the Transportation Town Hall, and he mentioned this technology. So I was so pleased when he signed on to that. So here's this wonderful award from the American Public Works Association. I'd like to present to... Okay, I'd like to call to the stage Mary Maisy and the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission appointees. Is Mary here? And the students as well? For those of you who are not aware, the city of Tempe has a mayor's and youth advisory committee that does incredible work to give youth a voice in local government. The commission was established in 1980 and is comprised of 100% schools in Tempe. In Section 5A1, the council will be voting to approve the appointed members to the commission, and we're excited to have here some of our appointees. We're looking forward to your recommendations in the spring. So thank you to Isis Kelly. Am I pronouncing your name right? Oh, it's Isis Kelly. From Laird Middle School, Rachel Russell from Fies College Prepertory Middle School, and it's Adia Austin, Tempe High School, and Sarah Schick from Tempe High School. Thanks so much for being here today and giving us your time, not just today, but in the months to come. And it's so great to have representation from a variety of our young people, perspectives from all across the board. We're really looking forward to getting down and getting the work done. So thank you so much for being here. All right. Excuse me. Now we'll switch to the city managers' reports and announcements.
Thank you, Vice Mayor QB, members of council. We have two announcements, and actually three tonight. First, the city clerk, Brigida Kuiper, has asked to provide an election 2018 update.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Brigida Kuiper, city clerk. And it is my pleasure today to provide some information to you on the November 18 statewide election. I believe we have, there's some brochures in the back of the chambers, and there are copies on your screen there, both in English and Spanish, that provide some additional information regarding the city's election. Election day is Tuesday, November 6. There are two propositions on the ballot. First is Proposition 417, which is a sales and use tax for arts and culture throughout Tempe. And the second proposition on the statewide ballot is Proposition 418, which is a city charter amendment concerning removal of a council member from office. For more information on the propositions, you can look for your publicity pamphlet that was just mailed this week and is hitting mailboxes now. And this is mailed to all households that contain a registered voter. If you are not registered to vote, I would encourage you to do so. The deadline is October 9, and you can register to vote online at servicearizona.com. Early voting starts October 10, and you can look for your early ballot in the mail in the days following the 10th. To request an early ballot or check on the status of your early ballot, you may go to maricopa.vote. And for more information on the city's election, you can go to tempe.gov/election. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Brigida Kuiper. Soy la secretaria de municipal de Tempe. Para más información de elección en español, vaya a tempe.gov/election. Gracias, and thank you.
Hard to follow that, but we're going to try. Our second announcement is Right Tree, Right Place, a pilot program between the city of Tempe and SRP. Going to give a brief presentation about that. Here we come. Isaac Shavero is here.
I'll do my presentation in Spanish then. Before I get started in the presentation, I want to first and foremost acknowledge, well, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Isaac Shavero, Transportation Maintenance Manager. I want to acknowledge someone in the audience that has been very instrumental in making sure that this partnership is a success, and that is Shawn Thompson, who's our landscape coordinator. He's been the boots on the ground and has done some tremendous work in making sure that this partnership works. So with that said, Right Tree, Right Place, which is, like I said, a partnership between Tempe and SRP. And this is a great partnership for us because it helps out in the council strategic priorities in moving the needle forward in both of these two priorities. The first one is 20-minute city, and then the other one is, of course, the 25 trees per acre on average on city property. And I'll explain a little bit more how those two are impacted. So the primary purpose of the partnership is to be able to remove its twofold. It's pretty simple but yet important. It's twofold. It's basically removing trees under existing power lines, as you can see on the right-hand side of the picture. And then it also, at the same time, replanting those trees, but trees that are the right species for the right location, thus the title. And the other advantage, of course, is SRP is, of course, coming to the table and providing three trees to one. So basically, they're providing us with planting of three trees for the removal of one tree. The total in the entire program is, we'll be planting about 354 trees in our public right-ofways and removing about 118 of those trees. And of course, Tempe, along with SRP, will be going to these nurseries and selecting the appropriate tree that goes in the right place, still under these power lines. SRP spends a significant amount of time in their line-clearing crews, making sure that, one, their system is reliable, and that these trees, the canopies, once they reach their full umbrella, that they're not creating a safety for our residents. So we want to make sure that we're putting, again, the right tree in the right place and not having to create this issue into the future. At the same time, there's some sustainability goals, of course, that are achieved during this process, and that is the ability for us to increase the urban tree canopy. With more trees, of course, there's the opportunity for avian wildlife. And the third bullet, of course, is the more shade on our right-ofway, the more shade on our sidewalks and roadways increases the, or reduces, I should say, the urban heat-island effect. As I mentioned earlier, the reduction in these trees, as you can see in the picture, increases safety and reliability to the SRP power lines and as well as creates reliability for the power users of our residents in their homes. Oh, I missed one bullet point that's crucially as important, and that is also addressing trees that are structurally unsound by, sometimes SRP in their line-clearing process basically takes out the leader of the tree, creating the tree to be structurally unsound. So we're also targeting those trees. So how do we move forward? SRP commitment is basically to provide labor and resources to remove these trees and also replant these trees. These trees at a minimum are going to be 24-inch boxes, and as I mentioned earlier, at a ratio of 3 to 1. Our city of Tempe commitments is that we will be right behind them stump-grinding these trees that are being removed. We will also ensure that there's working irrigation system so that they're sustainable and there's trees that are here for the long haul. We will also mutually agree with SRP on locations and picking out the tree species, thus the right location, the right tree for the right place. Another important bullet is we're committing to making sure that we have a diversion program and a location for these trees that we're removing. Therefore, we're working closely with our waste management group, our Tempe Green Organics compost area, to make sure that those trees are going to our compost. And another important bullet is very close public outreach to our residents that are adjacent to these trees that are being removed as well as that are being planted so that there's minimal impact to our residents. Final steps in moving in that direction is we wanted to start small to make sure that the pilot program at Southern River is successful. Before we move forward in removing the additional 354 trees, here's kind of a tentative schedule with an evaluation of October 22nd to make sure that we're on target and we're heading in the right direction with the completion of March 2019 with the additional 354 trees. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor QB. Just one question. This is outstanding, this is great. I enjoy your presentation, and thank you for doing this. This is truly what we need within our city, more shade, more trees, and things like that. And I'm proud that we're working with SRP to try to put the right appropriate tree under the lines. My question is, do we also have a plan to replace trees if they do die? Will we have the ability to replace those trees at some point?
Yes, we do have, we do have an, are you referring to the trees that are...
The trees in this, and well, and probably citywide, too, maybe twofold.
Yes.
So when we do plant new trees, and after two or three years, either they get run over or they die, do we have a program in place to replace those trees that do get run over or die?
Yes, so with that, we have two opportunities to make sure that, one, we're planting some additional trees in our public right-ofways through our capital improvement project. And then in addition to that, we also have a maintenance operating expenditure to be able to take care of not only the trees but also the systems that feed the tree.
I know that you've had trouble keeping up with the maintenance of the trees, and I just was wondering, since we're going to be planting so many more trees, are we going to increase that budget so you are able to make sure that the trees get enough water after they're planted?
Yes, so the idea behind our increasing our capital improvement projects, along with that, there's a certain percentage of operating expenditures that we request from year to year to make sure that we're addressing those kinds of issues and taking care of the irrigation, taking care of making sure that we're trimming and that we're pruning adequately and timely.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you so much. Now we'll move on to item 5, the consent agenda.
Vice Mayor QB, I do have one last thing. It wasn't on the agenda, but I did want to, I did want to say with your permission, in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but you had mentioned the proclamation earlier, we have representatives in the back of the room from our Tempe Police Department's Domestic Violence Squad, as well as representatives from CARE7. They work daily to combat and address the problems and the issues associated with domestic violence and to seek justice for those victims of domestic violence. The model of working with our crisis responders in CARE7, along with our police department in sort of a seamless care for victims of domestic violence, is a nationally recognized model that we are very proud of. So they wanted to be here tonight and to also support October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So I wanted to make sure that they were also recognized. Thank you.
And do they have some, do we have some purple ribbons perhaps, to distribute, some purple ribbons to distribute to the council?
Sorry, purple ribbons?
Purple ribbons?
I believe that...
Or ties, okay. Just give us your ties.
I know that some of them are wearing such ribbons.
Thank you so much for being here. We will now move on to the item 5, the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk, and council members may remove any item for separate consideration. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card in the back. It's in the back of the council chambers, and please give it to the deputy city clerk. I will call your name when it's your turn for public comment. And now I'd like to announce the consent agenda. So we have miscellaneous items 5A1 to 5A12, with the exception of item 5A10, which has been removed, deleted from the agenda at the request of staff. We also have awards of bids and contracts, items 5B1 to 5B10, with the exception of item 5B1, which has been removed, deleted from the agenda at the request of staff. And then lastly, we have the resolutions, items 5C1 to 5C8. So any agenda item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed out there, please get my attention now. You want? Making it easy for me. Then I ask my council colleagues if there are any agenda items they'd like to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration. Whoa. Okay, then I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, and second, with the exception of the items that have been pulled for separate consideration.
I'm sorry, could I hear who made the motion and the second?
Yes, that was Robyn, Councilmember Robyn Aradona Savage made the motion, seconded by Randy Keating. Yes, that was Robyn, Councilmember Robyn Aragona-Savage made the motion, seconded by Randy Keating. Thank you. So please vote on your voting machine. Okay, and so it's six to zero with Mayor Mark Mitchell absent. Okay, now we're going to go to the non-consent agenda. Okay. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted on at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted on tonight. First item is A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. The first item under this section is 6A1, which reads, approve the utilization, I wish I could say use, approve the utilization of a one-year State of Arizona contract with GuideSoft Incorporated doing business as knowledge services for temporary staffing services. Any council members have any comments or discussion about this item? Okay, a motion?
Second.
Okay. And please vote. That's six to zero with Mark Mitchell absent. The next item under this section is 6A2, and our staff is requesting that 6A2 be continued to the next regular council meeting on October 22nd, 2018. But we do, I do have to move to continue that item 6A2 to the October 22nd regular council meeting. Thank you. And yes, I'm supposed to announce that, sorry. Moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Aragona-Savage. Please vote. And that motion passes, six to nothing with Mark Mitchell absent. Okay, there we go. The next item under this section is 6A3. 6A3, approve 29 one-year contract renewals to firms that provide repair and maintenance services related to the upkeep of city facilities. I will spare you the reading of the 29 companies. So are there any comments and discussion from my colleagues? Motion, second? Motion made by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. Passes six zero with Mayor Mark Mitchell absent. The last item under this section is 6A4, which is approve the transfer of budget appropriation in the amount of $2,213,846 from the Parks Improvement Recreational Capital Improvement Program to the Human Services Department's Community Development block grant CDBG budget. Any comments or discussion? Okay, moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Thank you. Six zero with Mayor Mark Mitchell absent. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearings and votes for these items are scheduled for October 22nd, 2018. So B, ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The first item under this section is 6B1, introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing a power distribution easement for electrical power supply purposes on certain city-owned land located in Kiwanis Park near the intersection of Mill Avenue and All-America Way, authorizing the city engineer or her designee to execute such easements and related documents. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 22nd, 2018. Is there anyone in the audience who's wishing to address the council on this issue? And I'll close the public hearing and ask if any council members would like to provide any comments or discussion? Yes, well said, okay. No, this one's, you're trying to trick me, my first time. The last item on this section is 6B2, introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 2102 East Rio Swato Parkway. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 22nd, 2018. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the city council on this item? Hearing none, I close the public hearing and ask if there's any council members that wish to comment on this item. Okay. So the agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption are now to be considered. These items are read and introduced on August 20th, 2018, but votes will be taken tonight. Ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. The first item in this section is 6C1. 6C1 is hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, relating to the Tempe Citizens Panel for review of police complaints and use of force, by moving it within the Tempe City Code to be consistent with other similarly situated ordinances and amending Section 2-711 established-composition. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? I will close the public hearing then, and council members, any comment or discussion on this item? And I'd like to ask for a motion on item 61 and a second. So moved, I'm sorry, moved by Councilmember Randy Keating, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. Passes six zero with Mark Mitchell absent. The next item under this section is 6C2. 6C2 will hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for zoning map amendment and approve a development plan review for two new, single-story commercial buildings totaling 4,630 square feet for NEC Baseline Road and Roosevelt Street Retail, located at 660 West Baseline Road. The applicant is Vertical Design Studios. I do have one public item comment, Teri Sage is filed, would like to speak on this issue. And if there's any other members of the public that would like to speak.
Vice Mayor, would you like the applicant to make a presentation first, or would you like to hear speakers? Sometimes there's a presentation.
Would you mind, Teri, if we did that? Sorry about that, newbie.
Thank you, Vice Mayor QB and Acting Mayor QB and members of the council. I will try to keep this brief. We've sped along so quickly tonight. It's wonderful. I'll try to get us all out of here. I know we've gone through all of this before. I just wanted to talk about a few issues. Just clarify a few issues and kind of bring you up to speed on a few things. As you probably know, this is a zoning case that brings a property into conformance with the general plan, the voter-approved general plan for the area. And we are proposing a development that has actually developed a little bit less than what the commercial zoning and the commercial general plan really envisions for the property. And I'll just go through these very quickly, and if you have questions, I can handle those, take those later. But I just want to show you a couple of things. One of the things I think I talked about last time were some of the gaps in the traffic, and I think that's very important for this area. There are significant gaps in the traffic in rush hour times, and I just wanted to show you that a little bit. We're not saying that this isn't, you know, a major arterial street, and there are, you know, there is traffic on there. But this is some video taken that you can kind of see just what I'm talking about in case you haven't been around there in a while. But this is leading up to Kyrene traveling westbound at about 5:30, 6:00 p.m., a couple of days after the DRC hearing, I guess, September 4th, westbound on Baseline. It's really just to show you the gaps that are created in traffic that are created by the traffic signals and how the traffic signals work on the timing. So we're coming up to Kyrene right now. Again, this is rush hour afternoon traffic. And as you can see, the westbound and a good portion of the eastbound traffic has a significant gap. We've got the green now on Kyrene going southbound, and there's probably about a 30-second timing between this and when the northbound Kyrene traffic actually starts up again. So there's quite a bit of traffic gap happening there. I won't play the whole thing, but you can kind of see there's the traffic coming from Kyrene. There was a good 30 seconds or so that occurred. So I won't bore you with all of that, but the next one is another one westbound. But more importantly, there's a, let's see. Looks like it wants to play by itself now. Uh-oh. Okay. Sorry, technology. Anyway, you can see the gaps. I've got one, oh, this is a left turn onto, off of Roosevelt at 4:48 p.m., rush hour again, turning westbound onto there. So, you know, there are significant gaps. I just wanted to show you. It's my beautiful yellow Jeep, yes. And I'm glad you can't hear the sound because I had the radio on. That would have been very, unless you like country music, that would have been weird. So anyway, you know, just to show you that the gaps in traffic are there and that, you know, we think this is a significant issue to know and to see. We've got some sightline information, too. You can kind of see the sightlines that were discussed at the last hearing. There's really discussion about how people can see the traffic coming and going and when they're turning, as well as the traffic coming up and down the street, as well as all the driveway cuts. The discussion is twofold. It's driveway curb cuts and the amount of them on the street in this intersection, as well as the site visibility in the area. Looks like it's buffering. There's nothing to buffer. Okay. Can you close it and open the other one up without the video?
Having some technical issues, folks.
Okay. I'll keep talking. He said he'll look it up. So the second issue that was brought up last time had to do with the sightlines. It's really about the visibility of the access of the intersection, which is very, very, as you saw on there, there's a lot of green. There's a lot of visibility, as well as the number of driveway curb cuts. We took a look at the curb cuts count onto Baseline Road, which directly impact how many cars are turning onto Baseline Road. I believe the number is, there's 13 within a quarter mile in each direction of Kyrene. There's, on both sides of the road, there's about 13 curb cuts that people will be driving into, as well as, I believe, four actual streets. The important thing to remember, too, is that this is a three-way intersection, Kyrene and Baseline. It's not a full four-way intersection, so it's got a lot less traffic on it than typical arterial intersection would. Other intersections in the immediate vicinity have much more than that and have a couple fewer than that. So, all right. So, for example, Southern and Mill has 22 driveway cuts within a quarter mile of Mill Avenue on each side, driving onto, leading onto Baseline, with four street intersections. Baseline and Rural has 17 with four street intersections. McClintock and Southern has 17. It's got a couple T-intersections like Kyrene. Our site has 13 with five small street intersections. Baseline and Mill has 12, Elliott and Rural has nine. So it puts us kind of at the bottom end, middle-ish, of all the different types of my sampling here of major arterial streets, intersections in Tempe, in the southern kind of north, northern area. So it's not unique. This intersection is not unique. This location is not unique. There are a lot of other locations that have very similar types of cuts. So you can see all the green, the green stars along Baseline, not the ones on Kyrene, but just the ones along Baseline I counted. This is a site that's fairly well distributed across the, across Baseline Road. There's not a big clumping of them. They're fairly well distributed, as well as there's a center lane for turning onto, which is the lane you saw me turn onto on the video. So that's the site. Site has 13 of them. Southern and Mill, there's 22, and you can see there's a huge cluster over on the east. There's a cluster on the west, you know, it's a little different, but still, it's got many, many more than this does. And you'll, you're familiar with all these sites. Baseline and Rural has 17. It's just to the east of here. It's got 17. Again, a large residential component adjacent, and it's got about 17 of those. McClintock and Southern also has 17. Baseline and Mill has 12, and Elliott and Rural has nine, just as a comparison. So this is, this is really not a unique circumstance. There's many other intersections in the valley or in the city that have a very similar circumstance, and I don't think this is by any way unique. Our traffic engineer Chuck Wright can answer any questions on that. We've obviously talked to Shelley and Julian Traffic Engineering about this quite extensively, and we understand there are no concerns with the project and this location and creating additional curb cut. Chuck can also talk about the issue of stopping distances that was brought up at one of the meetings. And then another issue that was brought up is using cobblestone auto spa for our site access. We really can't do that. There's an existing site, there's existing buildings, they have an existing traffic flow. It's not part of the proposed development, and additionally, it could possibly be a taking. Cobblestone is only being rezoned, that little piece up in the corner. They're only an applicant in this case because the city asked us to. So they just want us to clean it up. So I just want to bring that up in case it comes up again. It's just not feasible at this point. Couple of clarifications as well. We talked about the apartments last time. It is an exit-only. I did not see a fire access gate or key or anything, so I just want to clarify that with everybody. Second thing is the driveway widths. The driveway width on Baseline is 30 feet, which is the Tempe standard detail T320, and it allows 30 to 40 feet. We're at 30 feet. Additionally, just for your information, the current traffic volumes along Baseline, Broadway, and Southern, you can kind of see on there, they're very similar in their locations. Around 30,000 trip, traffic volume on those areas. Obviously, the closer you get to I-10, interchange is a little bit higher. So in this case, let's see, we've got a comparison here. In this case, you can kind of see this street, this area, this location is not significantly unique for Tempe. You can see the number of trips. We're up in the upper twenties, the thirties on Southern. On Broadway, we're in the thirties and 35s. And on Baseline, we're 34, 33, and then as you get to the freeway, obviously, it's a lot higher. So again, this is not a unique location. Traffic, obviously, on the freeway is a lot higher than the traffic on Baseline. And then, you know, it's about 53,000 versus about 200,000, so it's a big difference there. But again, that's not in front of our property. So just quickly to conclude, you know, our zoning is in conformance with this general plan. Calls for commercial zoning on this location, it's been vacant forever. I think the mayor had mentioned that, and it's been vacant forever. Jason said the location of the Antlers Bar. I'm sure some of you up here remember that. So that was a longtime establishment in Tempe. A few of the commissioners recalled that being there. We're developing in conformance with the general plan and actually a little bit less intense than the district allows for. This property, as concluded by our traffic engineer as well as the city, is not going to be increasing or adding to any of these problems if there are any. Obviously, Baseline's a big street, you know. It's sometimes hard to pull onto, sometimes not. Sometimes you have to wait a little while, sometimes you don't. Same thing with my street that I live on. We certainly don't want to be adding to that, and we don't believe we are. And that's also part of our discussions of traffic engineering, is that I believe, and Shelley's here, that we're not adding to any issues or any traffic on that street. In fact, one of the positives of this development is we're actually alleviating cut-through traffic into that neighborhood. So a typical development, you know, may not be able to alleviate that cut-through. We're right in, right out onto Roosevelt. We're putting that median in the middle of Roosevelt so that cars can't turn into it. And, you know, we're really alleviating that potential for cut-through traffic. And again, Baseline is not even full to capacity. It's reduced in the last couple of years by 8,000 trips, 8,000 vehicles. So while it is a major arterial street that's meant to handle this kind of traffic, again, this project is not adding to that or having any immediate issues. With that, I'll just conclude. I just kind of briefly went through everything there for you. But we agree with the staff report, we agree with the staff's recommendation for approval and the DRC's recommendation for approval, as well as all of the stipulations. I don't know, Chuck, if you want to address any of the issues or just if we have questions. And then if we need to rebut, Chuck is here to answer anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. So I'd like to invite Teri Sage up to the podium to speak. If you could introduce yourself and state your place of residence.
My name is Teri Sage. I've been a Cassafiesa resident since the division started in 99. First, I just want to thank you guys for letting us talk tonight. I appreciate it. I have no problem whatsoever with that property being developed. The concern I have is with the drive-through, especially since it's a Starbucks. Anytime you've been to Starbucks, lines are out on the street. So we have concerns with that because there's a city bus that stops right there in front of those access points also. We also have a school bus stop at the gates that she showed you. There's a school bus stop right there where our children get on the bus. You have people exiting out of the lot from there for the proposal. You have people exiting out of the lot from there for the proposal. They have offered for the median, which is a really great idea. I also suggested at one of the other meetings that they put a speed bump on each side of the median piece to going in that exit, because we only have two access points into our subdivision. The one there on Roosevelt and the one exiting on Hardy. On Hardy, it's also very hard to get out. There's a "do not block" intersection sign on Hardy going southbound to Baseline, and I also sent an email asking if maybe it would be possible if you guys put an X in there to help with traffic, so we can actually get it out of that exit when the traffic is really high. And if a residence sign only, residence only sign could be maybe put in at both entrances, so that it would make it easier and try to keep some of the traffic cutting through.
I'm sorry, just one question. On that Hardy exit, there's no, there's a sign there that says "don't block traffic."
It says "do not block intersection."
Right, but the intersection's not painted, though. Am I correct?
No, it's not. I'm asking if it could be. If you guys could put the block X, because nobody reads that sign. They just park and then you can't get out. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I had a similar situation at like University and McClintock. In theory, when you're heading northbound, you're not supposed to block that either, and I've never had people heed that sign. But there's also no striping there. So I'd be curious just to hear from transportation, if they're here, if that's feasible, if that's within the realm of things that are permissible under the code.
Call up Shelley Siler to speak on these issues, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. So when it comes to marking locations, so basically putting Xs in the intersection, we try to reserve those for locations where there are higher turning conflicts, or we really want to emphasize that. I think that currently in the city, we have a couple of locations, so one of those is on University at the Light Rail Crossing, and what we were seeing is that cars were consistently parked, or stopping underneath the gatearms, and the gatearms were coming down on them. We did receive some contact from the Tempe School District, actually Kyrene, sorry, and we, regarding trying to get buses back into their facility. We've piloted that to see if that actually is making a difference. So it's, it's an option. However, we do try to reserve it for special consideration, because the more we put that out there, the less compliance we will likely get with that.
Terri mentioned the buses coming in that area. Have you guys looked at that?
The public, city buses?
Yes. I believe she mentioned a school bus and a city bus.
So the school bus, it sounds like stops on Roosevelt in front of the apartment complex? So standard stop, yeah, the buses should be, have their signs on them to identify to vehicles that are passing them to stop. So if there were concerns about that school bus stop, we would want to work with the school district. We work regularly with them to address any issues they see, so certainly, that could be addressed separately. We did provide information in a Friday packet to all of you regarding the city bus stop that is located just east of this location. As you probably recall, or most of you recall, we did do an analysis and put together a matrix of locations where we are recommending bus pullouts to be. Because Baseline Road is three lanes, it does not rise, it does not rise to the top. I believe it's about 50 down. We would not really recommend putting a bus pullout in front of this property, because then it makes it more difficult for those making transfers to the Kyrene route. We like to keep them fairly close. So certainly, the ideal location would be in front of the car wash, and we will continue to work towards that. We recognize, though, that this will be a very difficult location for us to get a bus pullout.
So you don't see the buses as a problem, though?
Anytime a bus stops in traffic, obviously, there are increased chances for collisions to occur, mostly rear-end. However, that can occur beyond just buses. You know, if we get back up in traffic, obviously, that increases our chances too. So I don't see this as a situation that is different from other locations in the city.
Thanks, Shelley. We appreciate your help.
Shelley, should this project be approved, I assume there'd be some kind of periodic evaluation of the traffic conditions and assessment?
So as traffic engineers and, you know, with the division, it's our responsibility to obviously ensure the safety of the traveling public, and Julian and his team do a great job of looking at high accident locations to make sure that we're addressing them. We do road safety assessments, you know, we're working towards Vision Zero, so certainly, ongoing assessments would be conducted.
Savage. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I mean, first and foremost, I think, I think you guys all know what some of my concerns were from last time we met, and I always say thank you very much for anybody that wants to be part of the Tempe business family. I think it's always great to see really good developers that, working with the great lawyers, come to the city of Tempe and provide some really excellent new projects. I think we all know that that site has been vacant for a very long time, and I think whenever we have the ability to bring in some quality development is really good, and I do definitely appreciate that. And I want to say thank you for taking on that little sliver of property in the back. I mean, I think that'll be really nice addition too, so I certainly appreciate that. And the fact that, I think we had the discussion a few weeks ago in regards to the quality of the design of at least the Starbucks that we know of, because I think we had two of them here built, and I think we don't need to go back through that, how one looks significantly different than the other, and I think it's the one that we, the one that has the quality is the one that would be preferred in this, in this moving forward. With that said, I will tell you, I think I still do have a lot of concerns. I think one of the things that we have to talk about is circulation, and I am just a little kind of concerned in regards to how that all works, in regards to the traffic, the circulation, and the pedestrians and the neighborhoods. So it's really difficult for me to move forward on this one, but I will tell you, I'm fairly confident it will move forward tonight, and I have no doubt that you will bring forth a really great project and hopefully work with the community and the neighbors, because I think it's just really important that it's a welcoming, and if there are issues or concerns, that you not only work with city staff, but also the neighborhoods too, because we want them to be able to enjoy those, whatever they may be. One, we know, we don't know what the other one will be in the future, but I think it's just really important that, you know, that we start off on a really good foot, and hopefully that'll create a lot of synergy right there on that area. So with that, I just, I just wanted you to know my position and where I was, so thank you.
We have two additional members of the public that would like to speak. I'd like to call up Tony Cristinelli, who filed a public speaker card. Tony? Please introduce yourself and state your place of residence.
Hi, I'm Tony Cristinelli, 5038 South Roosevelt Street, Tempe, 8282. I'm a member of the HOA Board, Casa Fiesta. And I guess I was hoping for a little bit more based on the direction from the last city council meeting. Frankly, I'm a little under-impressed. I thought there was some very specific directions, but I feel that a camera video and a windshield is a very poor documentation. If that's what's needed, I can get five or six that'll show you can't make the turn. Is there a public police officer in the room tonight? Sir, is it legal in the city of?
Speak into the microphone, Tony.
Sorry. Is it legal in the city of Tempe to enter a multi-lane road and use the center lane as your access point? My understanding is that's against Arizona state law. That center lane is for exiting, the major trunkway is not for entering. That's how I've been told it's interpreted. If we could get confirmation of that, because the developer did exactly what you're not supposed to do, and it's what everybody does, because it's the only way to enter. So we're setting up a scenario where, in order to enter the road, you have to do an illegal turn. Doesn't sound like it's the right answer. I guess really that's.
Should we have Angel Carvajal speak to that issue?
Yes.
Pardon? Or the assistant? Well, he asked him first.
Acting Mayor, Members of Council, my name's Angel Carvajal, one of the Assistant Chiefs of the Tempe Police Department. That two-way left turn lane can be used exiting a private drive to enter the roadway, or to leave the roadway into a private drive. The only restrictions on that lane is that you cannot continue in that lane when there's a brake in it, because at that point, you are essentially driving left to center through an intersection. The lane is not intended to be a merging lane. It's meant to, you enter that lane, and then as soon as possible, move to the right into turn traffic safely.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So you're saying that the turn in the video was a legal turn?
It was a legal.
Legal, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Chief.
Glad to hear that.
We've lost track of the time, but is there anything else you wanted to add to your statement?
No, I guess that's it. Like I would have expected a little more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call up Michael Wilson. Please introduce yourself and state your place of residence.
Good evening, Michael Wilson. I live in Tempe. I actually work in Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm with Mark Taylor Residential, and we own and manage San Palma Apartments, just to the west of the new development. And back to Tony's question, you know, we have the same issue essentially out in front of our property, where that middle lane is used for entering and exiting. And we encourage our residents to use that, but to make a stop, like the officer said as well. So we do understand the constraints there and acknowledge that. But nonetheless, we've been at that site since 1997, and we continue to develop throughout Arizona. We've developed almost 20,000 units. And the one thing about this, we're very particular in terms of the new development that goes in and around our communities, because we feel as though we build very quality product. In reviewing the design, the build-out of this, we actually are in great favor of this. Couple of reasons. Obviously enhances the value of the neighborhood, and two, the walkability factor for our residents. We know Baseline's a busy road. There are not as many viable options for restaurants, for coffee, things like that, and you would have to cross Baseline Road for things like that. So we view this as very favorable, not only to our residents, probably 500, 600 people, but also the existing neighborhood in and around the community. So just wanted to state that for all of you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask any of my fellow council members if they would like to speak on this topic. Nobody?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I moved here in 2003, and a good friend of mine lived at the Mark Taylor Apartments on Baseline, close to the property in question, and, you know, that property was a dirt lot then, and it's a dirt lot now. And, you know, just like I said with, you know, the whole quick quack debacle, you know, I'm in favor of filling in those empty spaces in the city. I'm in favor of adding new business to the city, new revenues to the city, new amenities to the city. So I'm actually quite pleased with this project, and I, you know, from what staff is telling us, there won't be a significant traffic implication. So, you know, I'm happy to hear that. So I will be supporting this project tonight.
That's Mayor McGrandville.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, you know, I think I put campaign signs there in 2000 when I ran for office the first time, and they all got stolen. And it's been a dirt lot ever since. So one thing I would say to the residents who came out is, keep coming out, keep coming out for the things that you care about, that you're passionate about. Regardless of how this vote goes, it doesn't mean we don't appreciate hearing from you, it doesn't mean we don't hear you. It's just, I agree with Councilmember Keating. I don't know what could go here that would provide less issue than this. So I understand your concerns, I just, I don't know of a better solution than what we've got right now in front of us.
So I would just like to add that the proposed plan, it is in compliance with the general plan and the proposed zoning district, and all design-related criteria. I know there was significant community opposition, and issues were raised about traffic and noise and operational issues. In my mind, they've been answered, and I know there's been an argument that there'll be an increase in traffic, but we look at the visits, more likely be visits by vehicles that are already in the area, convenience trip as opposed to destination trips. So I recognize that there has been some opposition and respect that, but I will be supporting the project as well. Would that call for a motion?
I'm moved.
By Councilmember Navara, and seconded by Councilmember Keating, I'm Grandville, excuse me. Would that, please vote. And that passes 5-1 with Councilmember, excuse me, by Mayor Mitchell, absent. Oh, wish I didn't hear, I'm trying to take over. Alexander Haig moment. Okay. Next, we'll move to 6C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 3, relating to the powers and duties of the Tempe Arts and Culture Commission. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Anybody willing to, wishing to address the city council on this item? With that, I will close the public hearing and ask my fellow council members if there are any comments or discussion on this item. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6C3.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Aradondo Savage. Please vote. And that passes 6-0 with Mayor Mark Mitchell absent. Okay. So now we'll move to current events and council announcements, future agenda items, and I would call on my fellow council members who have something to say amongst the public. Please proceed.
Yes, I just wanted to announce that this Saturday, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, there's going to be a free compost valley-wide giveaway, and it'll be at 55 North Rio Salado Road, and it's at the yard basically on Priest and Rio Salado. So I'd encourage you to go get your free compost. Secondly, I'd like to announce the Sister Cities 12th Annual Making a World of Difference Awards and Banquet, and that will be Thursday, October 11th, at 6:00 PM at the Tempe Center for the Arts, and the tickets are $80, and the event honors global meditarians, and there will be stories of inspiring service shared with attendees. Thank you.
Two things. First one, actually kind of went off without a hitch today, but it is a reflection of a really good thing staff has done over the last six months or a year. They've started looking at our contractors list and doing design bid build, like lowest bidder, and comparing those from time to time. And often, our in-house contractors have come in right on budget, and once in a while, they haven't come in quite where we expected, and so we put it out to a bid. Tonight was one of those nights. You know, during good times, it's easy to sort of just get everything done, but the pickleball courts are going to wait an extra two or three months, maybe. But consequently, the city was saved over $100,000 in that wait by putting it out to bid. So I really appreciate staff heeding the feedback that we've provided them and doing everything they can to be good stewards of residents' money. Second one is, there's a meet your councilmember thing coming up for myself, October, my right is October 3rd and 23rd, there you go, 23rd and 24th. And so you can come on out and chat about whatever city stuff you want to chat about. I think this is probably number, I don't even know, 15, 18 that I've done over the years. They're always pretty fun.
That's Mayor Keating. I'm just coming from, I'm just on my own way. Okay. Councilmember Navara.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for overlooking me. Just going to make up stuff now. No, I just wanted to thank the people for coming out. And I want to say to Colby, Councilmember Grandville's community conversations, and I do the coffee talks. It's just a great way to get information out there. We just recently had one on rideaway walls this last Monday, and just really taking a look at how our residential walls are looking on our major rideaways. look at how our residential walls are looking on our major rideaways. Month back from that one, just had another one on trade with Mexico, and I have to say that was very impressive with turnout, with the people that we had there from Mexico, from Washington, and local businesses around the Tempe area, and the possibility of connecting what they're doing in Mesa at Gateway Airport and streamlining customs. We're seeing a great opportunity to increase our businesses within Tempe to have dealings with Mexico and throughout. And I think it's going to be a great endeavor that we're trying to look forward towards, but I think it's going to help us within the city to increase our business, and not only just locally but nationally and globally. So I'm very excited about the conversations that we've had with our coffee talks. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just really quick, for all of those high school seniors that are thinking about going on to college, you know, at some point you're going to have to do your FAFSA form, so we are actually having a FAFSA day. So if you guys would like to come out and work on your financial aid forms, we are going to have volunteers there that will be able to help you from all of our different colleges. And the date of that is October 20th. Put it down on your schedule at the library. Registration is about 9:45, so it'll start about 10 o'clock. I recommend that you all come. It's a really great way to start working on those paperwork, what you need to do. Also, we just want to, I mean, I'm going to speak for Randy here just a little bit to say thank you to all those individuals that came out for our roundtable that we had this week. He's mad because I said it and he did it. But, you know, we really, I know we all have an opportunity to get out into the community, and it's a really great way to hear from our residents, and whether it's the good or the bad, or some concerns or suggestions, I mean, that's why we're there, that's why we do it. And another thing I just want to mention really quick is, we all had the opportunity to go to Don Carlos last night, and to me, that is really truly the Tempe way. We were able to recognize those individuals that go above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to service in the city of Tempe. I mean, that is the heart and soul of Tempe, and that's always been what it is, service before self, and I think that's why we all love this community so very much. And then really quick, because I know we don't have another meeting for a little while, but I have to tell my niece, who is, her birthday is next week, and she is like our biggest fan, she's like 11, so Suzie, happy birthday. I know she's going to be really happy, because she's probably watching. I don't know why, but she likes this show. Anyway, and her brother's birthday is right the day after, so anyway, happy birthday, Suzie. Thank you.
You know, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Arredondo Savage always steals my thunder, and even though my birthday's next week too, she hasn't wished me a happy birthday. But I would also like to thank everyone that came out to Randy and Robyn's roundtable. We had a great discussion about homelessness in Tempe, and, you know, PD came, and so did our human services staff, and we're really able to answer a lot of questions and address a lot of concerns, and I know that's an evolving conversation that's going to continue on in the future, so we'll continue to grapple with the severity of the situation. So, you know, I just really like to thank those that came out. We wouldn't know the problems that you're facing every day if you didn't get yourself involved in the community and provide us that sort of feedback, so I really appreciate it. And we're looking forward to doing another one in February, if I remember correctly. So hopefully you'll see that on social media, and you'll come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. So I just wanted to salute a dear woman that was lost to us this past month, PD Therese Lucere, who lost her battle with cancer. And she was loved by many. She was a warrior for social justice. Her brother is sitting back there, David Lucere, and she had such impact on the community, and I know her memory will stay in my heart, and we miss her greatly. I'd also like to salute to Karen Lathan. We recognize our Tempe Police Department, and Fire and Medical Rescue, and CARE 7, and all those who help us with domestic violence in our community. Karen Lathan is the woman who came to us with the idea of creating a Family Justice Commission back in 2015, and she is the chair of that commission, has been the inaugural chair, and continues to lead. She's an amazing woman, and she's a survivor herself, and she brings such personal testimony and heart and expertise to that role. So thank you, Karen, so much for all the work you do. I also want to salute Christine Wilkinson last night. She received the Don Carlos Humanitarian Award, and as Betsy Bayless said, "Michael Crow may be the brains of the ASU operation, or seen as the mind behind ASU," but she is the heart and soul of Arizona State University and gives back to so many organizations and people and students over her lifetime of commitment in Tempe. So a salute to the wonderful Christine. And then I'd like to also salute our deputy city manager, Stephen Methvin, who has a birthday today. How old is 60, what? I don't know. Something, something. Anyway, he'll never say. And I assume holding office hours connecting with QB this Saturday, the 29th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Community Connections Cafe. So that concludes the announcements. And now, public appearances. We have no scheduled public appearances tonight, but we do have a few unscheduled public appearances. We cannot comment when you speak on unscheduled public appearances, we can listen. So I would just like to read this announcement about public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council may only discuss matters listed on the agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the City Council unless they are specifically listed on the agenda. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Speakers' visual aids or recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, oh, I already did that myself to Stephen Methvin, sorry, or from becoming boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping, stomping of feet, yelling, or any similar demonstrations are also prohibited. Violations of these rules may result in removal from the City Council meeting. So with that, I would like to request that Ann Till come to the podium and speak, and please introduce yourself and state your place of residence.
Hi, I'm Ann Till, and I'm at 1935 East Meadow Drive, and I've been there 23 years about, and I'm the Alameda Meadows Neighborhood Chair. And I'm here to talk about college rentals, and I've sent email too recently to you guys, but, you know, there's a big increase in rentals in our neighborhood, and these are especially going to college students, and there's a lot more late-night noise from these parties. I can hear them actually streets away from me. I can hear yelling from these parties. I've sent my husband out. Where is it? I want to call the police, you know. But anyways, as you know, you know, these things resolve in trash, cars on the street, in loudness, about day and night. Last weekend, I think it was, there was a party, and the person next to him said they could hear them throughout their house. It was in the, from 4:00 to 8:00, though, you know, so. But anyways, the other thing about them, well, the affordability of housing, I think, is causing more students to live in these houses, so, you know, they're overpopulating them, and I think it's kind of hard to catch that they're having more than the three residents. But the real big issue is that they're dangerous, and you know there was a shooting at one of them a couple of weeks ago that's near my house. But also, my son died at a college party, and alcohol, and young people, you know, you want to let them be youth, but you just can't do that. You just, you can't be a parent and feel what I felt when I lost a kid at the party. So anyways, one of the things I notice is, a lot of these rentals are owned by the same people, and it doesn't seem like they have any accountability for that. They just keep, like, you get one set of college students out, and then another come in. So I guess I'm asking that, maybe you add the issue of college rentals to a future agenda or get, do more work on the topic to see what can be done, you know, to help the issue. That's it. Thanks.
My name is Erin Cornelius, and I'm a Tempe resident. In fact, I live next door to where the shooting occurred, August 26th, 27th. In the late night hours of that evening, there was a shooting incident next door to us during an ASU huge student party. Massive ASU student parties are not atypical in our neighborhood. It has gotten progressively worse in the last four to five years, with the last two years being worse. Almost 1/3 of the homes in our neighborhood are either Airbnb, ASU students, or group homes, with three of those either next door to me or directly across the street. The neighborhood we moved into is very different now. The parties are massive, with well in excess of 50 people, with people jumping off roofs into pools, beer cans involved in our front yard and on our sidewalk, and our front yard landscaping destroyed because of folks staggering across our yard to their vehicles which are parked up and down the street. When this shooting occurred, I happened to walk into my backyard as people were scaling our six-foot block wall fence, kind of coming over like ants, and we had dogs that are there for our protection. So I warned the kids they need to get back over the wall, or they may get bitten. And they proceeded to do so. They were running up and down the alley, up and down rural, and up and down La Jolla. And as a result of that, you know, a lot of our block, the blocks on our wall were ruined. The shooting was happening in the backyard, inside the home, and in between the boundary of our two homes. And my mother-in-law, my mother, who is here, lives on that side of the house, she's 81, extremely dangerous. We called 911, and Tempe PD responded very quickly. They were super great, but nonetheless, our street was blocked and closed for three days, so access into and out of our street was impossible. We just happened to be leaving for vacation next morning, and my daughter was coming from Glendale to babysit our house, and our dogs couldn't even get onto our street. So what I ask of you today is to work more closely with ASU to resolve this off-campus student housing issue. Of the homes in our neighborhood that are occupied by students, all of the homes have more than three unrelated residents, which is against City Code. It is sad that taxpaying residents are being driven out of our neighborhood so that students can behave badly. Additionally, as I was walking one of my dogs down La Jolla a few weeks ago, one of the houses across the street, which is also a student frat home, the front door opened, and a pocket kitty came running out of the house, off-leash, and chased my dog and I down the street, scooped my dog up, and I warned the kid, as the dog approached me, that if he got close, I was going to hurt his dog. Dog came close, and I hurt his dog. So I called Animal Control, did all that, but we're just, we're just very concerned in our neighborhood that not only our quality of life is decreasing, but our property values are decreasing because of these ongoing issues. I'm hoping next door, it's vacant, the residents were evicted, but it's owned by a property management company, and I hope more students don't move in. So I just ask you, please, to do something with ASU to address this issue, and I know it's difficult, but ASU is overcrowded, and there isn't enough. Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, and I know we're not allowed to engage because these are non-scheduled, but Andrew, I think this will be to you, our city manager. And, you know, we've really come a long way in regards to our partnership with ASU, and I think sometimes we don't really do a good job of communicating what is actually going on and how we're trying to work closer together, but unfortunately, we don't want anybody to feel unsafe in their homes. I'm just wondering if there is a way that maybe we can work with the neighborhood to inform them in regards to how we are working with ASU, as they are now actually part of a task force that meets and talks at the end of every week or every other week, I can't remember the specifics. But it would probably be really good to make sure that that neighborhood and maybe that association or the neighborhood association understands maybe kind of what those expectations are and how we can help them do what we need to do to make sure that there is some change in their neighborhood. Would that be all right?
Well said. Councilmember Navarro?
And to that, I know that we've worked on this for years, and even when I got on council, and so it maybe has its lows, its ups and downs, but we have done strategic moves to help mitigate some of that stuff. So I'm wanting, I'm hoping that we can get the information to some of these residents on what we have in place today, and then let's try to make some advancements possibly from that if we have a conversation with them later on. But to everyone's point, we definitely, definitely, I live in the area too, in the same neighborhood.
Be careful.
Right. So we're just, we do have things in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. I'd like to call David Lucere to speak, and please introduce yourself and state your place of residence.
Thank you. My name is David Lucere. I live here in Tempe, Arizona. I'd sing happy birthday to all of you, but that might be considered uproarious and disruptive. Happy birthday, everybody. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the IDEA campus. I have serious concerns about the design of that campus and its negative input, negative impact, or potential negative impact on the TCA. There are other stakeholders who have voiced the same concerns as I, and so I'm really just going to leave with a comment that I've left my contact information on the card and would like to get together with the appropriate City Council members, bring together a small group of concerned stakeholders, and see if we can't come up with a little bit better design for the use of that particular property and take a lot of different things into account, which I think have been overlooked to this point. So I'll leave my contact information there, and I hope I'd get some feedback from one or more of the City Council members regarding this particular issue, and I'd like to move forward together. Thank you very much.
David, and thank you for your service on the Veterans Commission.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Arts Commission too, or we were previously.
I am.
You are?
I'm still the chair of the Arts Commission.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, I'm Lori DeLuca, a Tempe resident, and I just wanted to ask a question. We had a lot of discussion about Prop 418 previously, and now that it's written, and it's, you know, you can actually find it, I have, I really have some concerns about it and what the end result was meant to be. And so my question to you is, why is it that the word convicted was taken out? So I want to make sure that everybody who's still here understands, 418 allows you guys to all vote to remove a council member. The way that it stands right now, and I'm reading it, is you leave for a tour of your office, so one of the things is that you violate the parts of the charter, you know, you miss a certain amount of council meetings, but the part that is most important is you are convicted of a crime involving moral turpitude, et cetera, but you are convicted of a crime. You have taken that out, and now you have removal from office, that you may remove a council member with due process and clear and convincing evidence for unlawful conduct involving moral turpitude, fraud, or corruption. However, looking at this, what this seems to me to be, which is what we were concerned about, myself and all the people that spoke and called your office, was that this allows you to decide who can be on or off council, because they do not have to go to a regular court and be convicted of a crime. You can decide if you have evidence in order to remove them. And I would like to know why you took that word out, because it's pretty clear you did. It was a concern for a lot of residents, and it still is, so I waited for this to come out. I've read it, and it's pretty obvious, it's very tricky, it's very hard to understand, you really have to read it and really think about it. And now I see these Prop 417 and 418, vote yes, and it's kind of interesting, because it says police and fires, you know, vote with your police and firemen. I'd like to know what kind of policeman would vote for something that takes away some people's rights as far as voting, and gives you guys all, you know, the decision-making process over a court of law. It's right here. You guys took out the word, that's what we were worried about, and that's what you did. Does anybody have any comment on why that happened? But you just commented to the woman over there.
I'm so sorry, the microphone is off. Yeah, it's an unscheduled public appearance, and under our rules and procedures, because it's not agendized, we can't comment and interact with you directly, and...
And you wrote it, and you wrote it after.
I said, your time is up, Mr. Luca.
And you commented on her thing.
Your time is up. You've had your time to speak, and your time is up.
So how do I get an answer to it?
You can address council communicator@tempe.gov.
Yeah, I don't...
But your time is up, Mr. Luca.
Thanks, Lori. That was your initiation, right? That was your initiation, right? And your idea?
Your time is up. Thank you so much. We'll now adjourn the meeting.
Pardon?
Thank you.